Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Remain standing for the prayer. To your only father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the privilege to be at this place today. We ask that you be with us as we take care of the business for the town, for the citizens of Wilson Mills. Let us be in agreement and in one accord, and Jesus may not fail. We need an approval of the agenda.
Make a motion that we approve the agenda as written.
Mayor Pro Tim Triffitt made the motion. Councilman Brown seconded, all in favor, let it be known by saying I. All opposed. We have the minutes of the August twenty first meeting. I have a motion to approve them.
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tim Triffitt made the motion. Councilman Brown seconded, all in favor, let it be known by saying I. All opposed. At this time, we'll have our first public forum. Anyone wishing to speak to council, please come forward, state your name, address, limit your comments to three minutes. Come to the podium. If you would, please sign in too. Sir, please push the button on the mic so they can come on. Thank you.
Amen. My name is Reverend Jermaine Robinson, I'm the pastor of Union Hill AME Church over here in Wilson Mills, right around the corner. I'm coming because we need some guidance. If you're aware, the county has been, has put this, the water line, and it came through our property with the Eastman. And we were told originally that our property will be put back the way it was found. Just three years ago, we took out a loan to pay my parking lot because in order to get in and out of our parking lot, we had to sit in the water. If it rained, it flooded, we had to push cars in and out. Now, we're paying a loan every month to pay for the work that we had done. I don't think it's fair that the work that was done was done haphazardly. I have pictures of the original work because we hired a pavement company to do the parking lot. It looked beautiful. Unfortunately, COVID came in and really didn't give you the parking lot the way we wanted to. But it's a beautiful place. Our church is a beautiful place. It's a place that we love and we respect. And we just asking that if you will help get some guidance, so some direction as to who we need to see. Because we've been working with the third party. They have come twice. They came originally after they finished the work and they paved the parking lot. But they paved the part they tore up. A big hole came in. Another company came in and they patched the hole up. Now the parking lot looks even worse where they did the work. Like I said, we're just around the corner. Anybody can drive by and see the work. But like I said, it's the pastor of the church, and I also have one of my members here. We just asking you all to help us get some guidance and some feedback as to what we would need to do to get the parking lot looking like it did when we had it worked on. It's bad to be paying for work and it's not the way it was done originally.
Agreed. Leanna.
What's the name of your church again? I'm sorry.
Union Hill.
Union Hill.
Union Hill.
It's on Harrison.
Yep.
Pastor, who were the third parties that came into?
It's a contract to cover that the county hired.
The county hired to do the work originally?
Yes. No, the original work we paid for.
No, no, I mean, the original work that was done that tore up your.
Yes, a contract company, there are two different contract companies from the county. The people who put down the pipeline, they, they came in after it and they, they filled the hole. And then after I called in after the hole had set in and told them that the ground is sinking. And then we had this big old open hole that we had to cover to make sure nobody don't walk through our parking lot, whether it be walking down the road and falling in hole. And so they sent another company out.
This goes, this goes all the way across your parking lot, your property too.
Yes, ma'am.
It goes all the way across. I thought it did.
Yeah, you can, I mean, it's all obviously noticeable when you, when you come through.
If you'll call me tomorrow, I'll contact the contractor and look at their agreement and we'll talk about how to get somebody back out there.
I greatly appreciate it.
If you'll take it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for coming out and letting us know, Pastor.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I closed the public forum at six thirty-six. Regular business. I have attended, uh-oh. Is my? It feels like it's not on. Okay, it is, okay. I have attended a lot of meetings this month and I'm just going to share some of the things that I have been doing. I think that the month of September has been meeting month for me and I got four more I got to do, so. I attended the USDA Partners Network Forum in Wilson. Got a lot of information about grant money that's available. Ways that we can reach out and get this grant money. There's a lot of money out there. Thing about it is you got to know how to get it. Got to know who to contact, when to contact them, and what for. So I brought a lot of information back and, and staff is working on some of that stuff. The mayors had their regular meeting with Councilman Congressman Wiley Nichols and learned a lot about some of the things that he can do for us. If you know anybody that's having immigration problems or having passport problems or any of that, his office is very willing to help with any of that stuff. And we've got the information at Town Hall of who to contact, who to reach out to. If y'all know of anybody that's having passport or immigration status problems. The Congressman has a section in his department that can handle that. I attended part of the staff retreat, had a very helpful meeting with them. They, they met in the morning. I wasn't a part of that. I joined them for lunch and stayed through the afternoon. Some very good staff input and I am very proud of our staff that works at Town Hall and our staff that works at the police department. We are very fortunate to have people that are willing to work, to get the education they need to further their job. And I am so proud of our staff. I took part in the site evaluation for Johnston County Sewer Project. Leanna and I, Leanna and I met with them. Gave them the information they needed for Johnston County's regionalization sewer plan. That was an inside visit. David McGowan and I attended a luncheon for Congressman Nichols at the White Swan for elected officials and got to sit down and talk with everybody and, and the Congressman is a quiet man. He doesn't say a whole lot, but I got to talk to his staff and I got some very good information about some projects that I think will help us. So I brought that back to Leanna and we are working on some things through Congressman Nichols' office. Leanna and I attended the Triangle East State of the Union Meeting at the Ag Building. It, it was a very informative gathering of Triangle East Chamber of Commerce. We had a lot of people there, got to talk and sit with a lot of people, learn things that are going on in the county. I've got several more meetings scheduled for this month. And I hope maybe October won't be quite as bad as, as September has been for meetings because I've been on the road again almost the whole month. But I, I feel like that I need to attend these meetings because if we're not at the table, we won't know what's going on. And so I try to attend the meetings so that I can get the information. There's a whole, not a whole lot I can do, but I can bring the information back to the staff. And that's my main goal of being there, is to get the information, to bring it back so that our staff can look at it and figure out what to do. I think that's all I've got. Leanna.
You? So other than the meeting with the mayor, I do want to also commend staff. We had a really good all-day department head meeting week before last. And as I discussed with you all a couple of months ago, the tele project that I'm working on is the community engagement project. And that was a lot of what we went over with staff. It was just, it was not just department heads. We met in the morning and then at lunch, all of the staff came. And I'm looking forward to sharing some of that information with you at next month's meeting, our timeline. We're going to prioritize a few projects between now and the end of June for community engagement because again, that is part of your strategic plan, is to increase community engagement and information. And we've got probably four large Post-it note sheets all over the wall full of brainstorming ideas. And we narrowed that down to three or four doable things before the end of this year. So I'm looking forward to sharing more about that with you next month. I did want to let you know that the camera systems are in place at Town Hall. The keyless entry is in place and everything seems to be working out good. We've got a couple of bugs. We're still working out on the back door, but everything's secure and working well. We are meeting this week to finish the RFQ for the work on the council chambers at Town Hall. And we'll be getting that RFQ out by the end of the week or the first of next week. I will let you know that met with the, the managers of Johnston County last week. We try to meet once a month. And this was a conversation that the managers have where construction bids going out and not having a lot of luck getting responses just because of the size of the projects and what people are looking for right now. So just keep that in mind. I know Benson had a, a project that was around two, two and a half million dollars that they wound up having to bid out three times before they ever got that one bid. And it was almost triple what they had estimated in the beginning. So just keep that in mind. We're working through it, but we're going to get some stuff out and hopefully have something at least to give to you by the next meeting to see if we can get something awarded for that so we can get moving on it. The only other thing that I wanted to make you aware of is I am, have been on for a while the Chamber of Commerce Board and am a member of a subcommittee for economic development. And the board, the chamber has started a project through a company called Livability. And it's a publication that goes out pretty much anywhere that you can think of within the county. Hotels, doctor's offices, all the businesses, town halls, real estate agents, banks. And this publication highlights the different areas in the Triangle East region. And we're supposed to be getting some information in a couple of weeks on what the cost would be for us to put some information about Wilson's Mills in that. With the, kind of the place we are right now with our growth, they were suggesting that we do an ad for the town and then they are planning to talk with two of our larger developers, the one from Midtown and then another one over at Crescent Mills about information on those communities and the mixed use area at Midtown, just to promote this area for not only residential, for people that are moving here, but also for commercial. And the publication goes out the first of twenty-four, February, March of twenty-four. So I'm hoping that once we can get this council chambers project rolling, we can go ahead and start the branding and logo project and have something in there in this livability publication before it goes out the first of twenty-four with our branding. But I'll keep you updated on that. I just want to let you know that would be coming. And that's all I have unless anybody's got some questions.
I have one question. What, is there a timeline on the removal of the sign out in front of Town Hall by the previous owner? That big massive electric billboard thing?
They had twelve months to do that in our contract.
So what are we looking at? Be next year or?
Would be next May, we hit the deadline.
Okay.
In the contract. I'm sorry, the contract.
Yes. Most important thing, Marla, right?
Sorry.
So on your agenda is the TRC contract approval. In July, you all awarded the bid for the utilities comprehensive, the comprehensive utility plan, the TRC engineering. And I've included a copy of their proposal. As you can see, the total for that is sixty thousand. Our grant for this project is forty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars. We budgeted ten thousand for excess and Sherry is pretty confident that we can find that other dollar in the budget. We talked about it. We think we know what line we're going to take that out of.
Well, and I, and I was going to ask, do, do I need to make a motion that we approve a dollar?
I think that's within my threshold.
Alright.
Yeah. But you do need to approve this, this contract. And there, there are no changes from what we've discussed previously on this and what Marla and Tyra both presented to you when you awarded the bid.
Has council, has council reviewed this at all?
It's in your packet.
No, but has counselor reviewed it officially for us or not?
No, I've not. Set down.
Okay.
That's, that's up to you guys. I think time is sort of yet. Just flipping through it. It has a long form of mail. I think I'd say. Laid out, but.
Yeah.
I think. I'll make a motion. Prove it on track. TRC.
Mayor Pro Tim made the motion. Councilman Brown seconded it to approve the contract with TRC for the services for the comprehensive utility plan. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Anything else, Leanna?
That's all I have.
Okay. Sherry?
Good evening, Council. And tonight, you have your finance statement for August in your packet. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. You've done a great job. You, you always tend to know exactly what we're going to talk about.
Right.
And you always bring it up. So the envelope and taxes, etc. Coming. Getting some feedback here.
Yeah, we got them.
Hello. Thank you.
Something that I know.
I don't have any questions.
Okay, great.
Also in your package, you have the finance policy, which we had. We discussed the purchase order requirements and that's what has been changed in the finance policy. And we increased it from, it was, you had to write a written purchase order for the amount of anything purchased over two hundred and fifty dollars. So we have increased that for a written finance policy. I mean, written purchase order, excuse me.
And one of the reasons they were talking about this is that if they go to Lowe's or anywhere like that to get stuff, it doesn't take long to get two hundred and fifty dollars. And so every time they did that, they would have to have a purchase order.
Right.
So with this, it would give them a little bit more flexibility so that they wouldn't have to have an approval every single time they bought anything.
Gotcha. I make a motion, we approve the finance policy as amended.
I see.
Councilman McGowan made the motion. Councilman Brown seconded. Any discussion on this?
I just think it's obvious that we need to do this. It's, you know, there's no sense to do for something less than a thousand dollars. I mean, it's, to me, it's it's, it's.
Mandatory.
If we, if we've got the people that we trust to do, tell them the money, we need to let them do it.
And, and the cost of everything has gone up.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, since this policy was written, so I mean, it's a no-brainer for me.
Yeah.
Okay. All in, all in favor? All opposed? Okay.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Sherry. Good job, by the way. Leanna?
You have the staff report in front of you. There's not been very many changes from last month. Next month, you should see a big difference in this sheet because I'm going through and trying to make some updates on some things. But this month, it's pretty much the same as it was as far as our developments.
I have a question.
Okay.
On the Toller property. You say there's a, you're waiting for engineer. Very last property on this page, first page. You're waiting for engineer, what?
From Brian.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if it was the developer's.
He's, no, he's developing that in two phases. When you turn into the property, the one on the right is the one he's developing first. That's the one he has submitted plans for and we're just waiting for Mr. Leonard's.
Okay, you, when you turn into the property from where?
From Wilson's Mills Road.
Okay.
You'll turn into the property in between Mr. Tollers and Mr. Esens.
Oh, my.
And when you go back right behind Mr. Esens, it'll branch off part of it to the right, which is the part they're working on now. And then more of a corporate portion to the left. And that'll be like the second phase.
Okay.
Are we seeing, are we seeing a somewhat of a slowdown or a, a slowness to the development?
The developments that we already had approved or were in process are continuing to move forward. At this point, we have no new residential developments coming in and part of that is due to the sewer.
Right.
But we have had quite a bit of interest in commercial recently. With everything going on at Midtown Village and we have a couple of other parcels that have gone on the market as well.
So am, am I, am I correct in saying that we're kind of like everybody else waiting on the county?
On residential, yes. If it's industrial or commercial or schools.
Right.
That part we work through.
And I'm glad you mentioned that because that was my next question. As far as the school that was, that they're eventually going to build. They've already allocated for that, correct?
They are working on all that and that will be fine for both. There will actually be two schools on that property by the time all is said and done.
Right.
And they will be fine with what sewer they need.
Sounds good. Thank you for what you do.
Any other questions?
Anyone else have anything?
We have three more yards, not yard sales, three more farmers markets left this season. And, oh, no, actually, we only have two left. And then we've got a yard sale this Saturday, three more events this season, put it that way. The community yard sale this Saturday, the twenty-third, we have got thirty-five people signed up. So please spread the, yes, please spread the word and have them come out. We are working through some kinks and we'll have lunch provided for people to buy. And two more, um, two more farmers markets. This year, we're having a touch a truck event at the farmer's market on the seventh. So we are supposed to have several different emergency vehicles out there. Hopefully that'll pull a lot of people in. That's the only updates I have. And then in your packet, you have an application to be appointed to the events committee for Karen. Chansky. Chansky.
Chansky.
Chansky, yes.
She is.
I, I, I'm sorry.
She is a very consistent member of the farmers.
Yeah, she's one of our farmers market vendors.
Well, without a doubt, I, I, I make a motion that we approve Karen. Yes. To be appointed to, to our events committee and, and to assist you. Absolutely.
Motion was made by Councilman Brown, seconded by Councilman McGowan. Anyone have any comment? All in favor? All opposed?
Thank you.
You've got your police report in your packets if you have any questions.
I, I talked to the chief, just for the, for the board's information, I talked to the chief today with a question that I had. And that is, we, we read about it in the news all the time and that's squatters. And we don't have a problem, according to the chief, in Wilson's Mills right now, but should we ever have that? I was asking the chief how we're going to address it. And chief was leaning towards the civil response, whereas I was hoping for a, a more of a criminal side that would expedite it. And chief has agreed that it's a, it's a topic for discussion. He's going to bring it up so we don't reinvent the wheel. Going to bring it up at the next chief's meeting with the sheriff and everybody else and see how these guys work it out. But it's, it's something I think that we need to address because as we grow, could very, very well happen. And I want our officers fully trained and ready to go, whatever it is. That's all I had.
Okay. Your last page is the August twenty-three activity report that you asked for in the past. Got Sergeant, Sergeant Barton here, if you'd like to ask him any questions to address some of the rising numbers in there.
Other, other than June, I, I see a steady rise in the number of arrests. Is this principally DUIs or is this something else going on, Chief or Sergeant?
Uh, no, it's, it's pretty well spread out, drug-related assaults. What we're seeing here is a huge increase in call volume. And the interesting thing about it is we're having call volumes in clusters. It's not spread out throughout the days or the weeks. So we'll have periods of time where, and again, this is part of my job as patrol supervisor, is to look at this stuff and see where I need to put my people. And it's very difficult because we're, we're having times of the day, sometimes different times of the day, where we're having three things going on at once and I got one officer out there. So like last year, if you would have asked me, I would have told you we needed two officers per shift. Right now, we need three. We're way behind the eight ball.
Really? Three?
Yeah. I mean, we're, we're, we're trying to stay ahead of the flow, but we're losing that battle quickly because we're understaffed. The rest of the departments all around, they're all short people. It's not easy to get people, even if you got the spots for them. They're not easy to get. And I know that, you know, there's budgets and the money's there or it's not there, we're losing the battle. And eventually the quality of life's going to start to decline.
The what is?
The quality of life of the town, the security and safety of the people is going to start to decline. I've already had situations where I've had an officer up to arrest somebody and not be here in town and calls come over. And sheriff's office has to handle it. It takes them forty-five minutes to get here. If that's an overdose, person's going to die. I mean, it's that critical. So, um, I wanna put that to you, I know, like, again, I said, I'm not part of the budgets and all that type of stuff and I know that we had, we had a certain plan, how many people we're gonna be able to bring on. We're behind the eight ball. Um, and as you see the activities, that's, um, the officers stepping up their game times ten. Um, because they know that they have to with neighborhood checks constantly and all that stuff because we're way on demand, so.
Well, I think this is something that, uh, obviously you and the chief will be doing some, some huddling on that and that's something that the chief needs to bring to us when he deems it necessary, you know, to, to amend something and whatever.
We've been very lucky, let's say this year, we've had quite a few things break out and we were lucky enough to have three or four people working at the time. That had happened when I had one or two people, I'm not sure how it would work out.
On, on a related topic, it just goes to show you those two vehicles that we got that we, we have coming in that we, we would look at as somewhat, we looked at last year as somewhat excess, but we'll keep the slots. Remember that, Chief? Well, I think maybe we need to just keep those vehicles and not worry about shipping them out anywhere or reselling. Remember that was the option, correct?
Yeah.
No. Alright, thank you.
Those vehicles are, have been ordered, right?
Yeah, we have, one's already here, it's being detailed now and we have another one that should be here any, any day now.
I thought you said last month that we.
Yeah. Mainly, I just wanted to just keep it in your, you know, your ear, I know budget is what it is and we're looking towards later on in the year. Um, but it is imperative that we be able to have at a minimum, you know, two people on day and two people on night, full coverage. And we would've had that July first, had we gotten those two officers, but we didn't. So there are times at night, depending what the shift is, where we only got one person because we didn't get those two you know, that we were supposed to get back in July.
So why, why, why do we not get?
Um, just budgetary reasons, every, you know, every department was expecting somebody. But, you know, it was kind, timetable was kinda pushed back a little bit, which, you know, I, I understand that. Um, but it is what it is, the population is still coming, the buildings are still coming. And as you can see, our numbers continue to go up for the last three months, the activities, you know, they just continue to go up. Some of that's due to the summer, but some of it's just due to just an increase in population. And, um, we've seen a difference in the crimes too, you know, we have, um, more DWIs in the last year or so than we had last year. Um, a lot of that's just our proact, proactive, you know, abilities to go out there and find it. But, uh, it's not gonna go down, basically what I'm saying.
Is, is there such a thing, I guess Sergeant Barton would be, wanted to answer this maybe, uh, as having an, an on-call officer? So you're, you're running two on a particular shift and, and everything is just breaking loose and you have the option to call someone who is on call?
Oh, you're, you're looking at him. I've, I've jumped out of bed and got my uniform on and come out in the morning, it happens.
But o- other than you, there's no, nothing in the, in the policies and procedures to designate an officer as on-call or anything like that, or?
We don't really have that type where somebody's knows they're on-call and they're, you know, and they're waiting to be called in. But, you know, I mean, it's something we potentially look at, but it would, again, it, it costs money, it all costs.
So, so, but, but we don't have the excess number of officers to say you're on-call.
Right, we don't have enough to say, we have enough people that are now on.
Yeah, right, because they've either worked or, or they just got off.
Right.
Yeah.
Exactly.
They're either on the shift or just off.
I would also throw out, yeah, she's probably mad, I mean, I would also throw out that I have two officers right now who are dying to come on here full-time. Great officers and I'm worried that they're gonna go somewhere else and wait too long.
Just tell them to wait till we have budget. We got to get some money.
Generally, what we do is we hire, we hire them on part-time and just hope they'll stick around long enough, you know, until we can get them on full-time. We got two, there's one, one that come on tomorrow. And, and that's a good idea, but when they, when they come out of the, the academy, they're ready to go full-time. Um, I mean, you know that, I know that, um, Dave and, and the rest of them probably know that, so, so, I mean, we, we need to come to a realization that, that part-time police officers are, are fading away. It's kind of a thing of the past. Um, if you can get a part-timer, you, you, you're, you're pretty blessed, but. Yeah, honestly, if we had full staffed the way, you know, the goal is, we wouldn't have as many part-timers as we have. But it's worked very, very well for us because, you know, to fill in the gaps that we don't have more part-timers we have, you know, somebody will be usually willing to step up and, and fill the gap, so it's worked well, but our goal is to reduce that as we get more and more full-time officers.
Do we, do we do much for overtime for our current officers? You know, work an extra shift or whatever to fill in? We don't do that? Is it because we don't have the money?
We don't do overtime, we have comp time, so.
Oh, okay, nevermind.
That's pretty common everywhere, it's.
Okay, alright.
And just as a reminder, chief and I have discussed this and again, as you discussed during your budget sessions, we are gonna look at the revenues when the taxes start coming in in November to see if any of these positions can be filled mid-year because it's the two police officer positions, one in public works and then I believe we had one in, in administration, but that one can, that would be financed, so that can wait until July, but those three are all equally needed. And so that, those are positions that we're looking at mid-year, but, you know, I understand we've got people that are ready to come on now, but the purpose in that was to make sure that you didn't do more than you could on your annual cost, even though we had money in the budget for these one-time calls for these studies. That's completely different than your ongoing revenue for salaries.
And, and we, we are hoping that midterm, sometime around December, January, we can look at maybe.
Oh, we are, yeah, we will be, we're keeping a close eye on it.
We're, we're hoping that, that y'all can have some help by then, but, and it's not something that we put on the back burner, I want y'all to know that. Leanne and I talk about it quite often.
And I, I agree, I mean, but, but we have to rely on Leanne, I mean, to, to let us know and, I mean, but, but no, it's not on the back burner, absolutely.
Now, we, we have always been, a- as you guys are aware, very proactive in, in everything that we do, I mean, we've always been looking down the road and, and working to accommodate what we think is gonna happen, especially with police, look at vehicles, personnel, equipment. So, we, we're gonna keep this up front, I'm not gonna let this drop, none of us will.
Yeah, I think it's imperative that we get, if, if we have the opportunity, we, we take that opportunity to, to get these people we need.
Oh, we, we will, I mean, we're keeping a close eye on it, but I'm not gonna bind you all for more money than you can afford next year when the budget comes around, so.
Thank you.
I mean, you gotta have the revenue coming in to pay for it next year too, not just between now and June, so. We don't wanna hire these people and then have to let them go.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for jumping out of bed. We, we do appreciate it, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, you got my report, any questions?
The, um, the repairs at the park look very good. I really like the way the bathrooms are better than I did before.
Yeah, they come out really nice.
Yeah, they did. I, I like it better than even what they had there before, it's a lot nicer than them. I just wanted to tell you that.
Thank you.
The picnic tables look good too.
How much did we spend on repairing? The damage? Five thousand. Five, five grand? But, um, the insurance, so, what was the five-hundred-dollar deductible, I think? Five-hundred-dollar deductible. Okay. And chief, chief just hasn't decided, I hope we're, we're cer, I know we're certainly not dropping that regarding these juveniles. I, I'll talk to you later about that, find out more.
Okay, David. No. Does any town council have any comments? You said you wanted to make some comments tonight. Yeah.
Only thing that I have is I want to go on record and say that I was hoping after, after the traffic accident or where they took down the, the stoplights down here at Swift Creek, I was hoping that we would get somebody else who would reconfigure the, 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 the signal light. I think it was the same person.
No, it's worse.
Yeah, it sure is.
I have had so many people complain about it.
Yes, it's terrible.
But one person get through most of the time.
I've had so many texts from people.
They have been called.
That actually, yes.
It is horrible.
Yeah, but anyway, I, I, I guess we're, we're at their liberty, but, but, but I, I think the town council needs to remember that when we, when we talk to our representatives or senators, that the transportation secretary lives in Johnston County. So, um, a- and, and he, he's getting ready to retire, I think. And so, so maybe we could contact him and get the ball moving maybe a little bit faster. Um, Mayor, Leanne, um, you know, a- and, and I've hesitated on doing that. Um, going the political route, but maybe we need to for the town folks, so we can get through that intersection without it backing up all the way to Main Street or, or, I mean, it, it's just crazy.
Well, it does. It does pack up all the way to Main Street.
I, I just don't think they pay any attention to what we say, loo- look at, uh, look at the intersection that you talked about, Swift Creek and Strickland, it's still the same way and I went through there, I go through there once a week going, going to the airport in the dump and I go, nope, there's still only one way in and one way out. Alright, I would've hoped the fire department would've jumped down somebody's throat saying, by law, you're supposed to do this. Nothing, get a fire truck stuck in that corner.
Right through the deal. But DOT has been contacted about that lot because I had so many complaints the day after that accident because it is just terrible, but you know, we, we can contact DOT and we can tell them it's a mess and I guess the only thing would help is if the, the engineer from down there, if he got stuck in the traffic, maybe then he'd change it. Maybe we need to bring him to the town hall, man, getting stuck in that traffic.
I would just say that, that the, the, um, the secretary of transportation has a lot of pull.
Maybe we need to contact him. We will see what we can do. Anybody else have anything to add? Okay, we'll have our second open forum. Anyone wishing to speak to council, please come forward, take your name, your address, sign in. Limit your comments to three minutes. No one wishing.
Nobody's gonna say anything, I'd just like to say hi, Ms. Fay, and I hope you're feeling better. It's good to see you again.
No one wishing to come forward, we're closing the open forum. Mayor Protem made the motion to adjourn. Councilman Jernigan made the second, all in favor, let it be known by saying I, I.